I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forget the words.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda? So move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Which brings us to always the best part of any meeting, which is our student recognition. So, I guess Artie, take it away.
Yeah. I'll ask Coach Marr to come up after this. I did warn you, so. So it's my honor to be here again tonight. I think I've been here before for the girls' basketball team. And I brought some notes because there's a lot to remember when it comes to girls varsity basketball. First of all, hats off to this team this year. They had an incredible year. Get to some of their accomplishments. But the coaching staff led by Coach Marr, Hall of Famer, just does an amazing job. I think she would say that, you know, she can only get out of this team what they put into it. But she also has a tremendous staff with her, with Barbara Constantine, who's not here tonight, and Mike Toulon. So as a team, including that whole coaching staff, they had an amazing, amazing year. Over the last eight years, they have won eight league titles, seven sectional titles, six regional titles. They've been in the state finals five times. They've won four state championships and three federation championships. This year, their record was 25-2, and they made it to the state finals. They lost to a team, Seton Catholic, in the New York State Public High School Championships. A story for another day. Coach Marr and I have had many conversations about that. It was a great game. If you were up there, it was really, I mean, Seton Catholic, they're able to get players from all over. So we were up against a little bit. But to see the team rally back, being down early, come back to cut the, it was like a 16-7 game in the first quarter, and they rallied back to 22-19, 36-32 at half. Just a tremendous effort. And Seton Catholic pulled away in the fourth quarter. But it was a great game, and I think they represented Irvington unbelievably through the whole tournament. Some individual awards were accomplished this year as well. And Lindsay Halpin led the way. She was all-league, all-section, all-state. She was the league and sectional tournament MVP. And on the 7th of June, she'll be recognized as a ConEd Scholar-Athlete Award winner. So an amazing year for Lindsay. Not to be outdone, her teammates chipped in as well. Kelly Dagnan was all-section. Olivia Valdez was all-conference. And she also garnered a position on the state and section all-tournament teams. And Heather Hall was recognized at the state tournament with the state sportsmanship award.
Nice.
Very important. So an amazing accomplishment. They have some awards up here. I'll let Coach Marr come up, say a few words about the team, and then introduce them as well.
Hey, Coach.
Thank you all very much, because I know a lot of you came to our games and you supported us, and we really appreciate that very, very much. I want to thank Artie for all he's done. Artie is the backbone of what we do as coaches. He supports us. He's at every game. He spends more time here than anybody that I know. And we really appreciate very, very much what you do. What he said about team is absolutely right. This is a very special team, and it starts out with the Toulons. Barbara Constantine is a Toulon. And she couldn't make it tonight because her kids all have games. They have Little League and lacrosse and things like that. And Mike Toulon is our JV coach, and he could leave at the end of JV season. He doesn't. He stays and he comes, and he's really great with Xs and Os. And I don't know what I'd do without him. So I want to thank Mike and your sister very, very much. I really believe what Artie said about team is true. This team knows, I feel, very special about the way they are. We had one eighth grader, we had two freshmen, three sophomores, four juniors, and one senior. And they got along so well, it was unbelievable. If you, most of the time you have something like that, and there's fighting. I don't like to say it, but girls fight. But we do. But this team was, they were unbelievably close, and they always, always helped each other. Kelly Dagnan had a very serious illness during the season. And the way these girls rallied around Kelly was unbelievable. It was incredible. They all were at the hospital. They were sending her gifts. They were dedicating games to her. And it was not about the wins and losses. They had great wins. They had incredible wins. I don't think anybody expected us to get as far as we did. But what they did as a team and how they helped each other, how the seniors and the juniors helped the sophomores and the freshmen, and sometimes the eighth graders and freshmen helped the seniors. And that's what I love about you guys. You're very, very, very special. Another really important thing, which is a credit to all of Irvington, is every girl on this team is a Scholar-Athlete. I don't know that that happens a whole lot. I don't know any other team, and Artie can correct me, that every girl on the team has been a Scholar-Athlete. And that's really why they're here. They're not here to play basketball. They're here to learn. They know how much I love them. We haven't had our Dunians, because I keep, like, sort of making, wanting the season to be longer and longer and longer, because I feel that strongly about this team. But again, I thank you very, very much for honoring me. It's honoring them. It's an honor for me to be here and to have the privilege of coaching these girls. So thank you very much.
And then we should show off the hardware, too.
Oh, okay. I think the basketball, someplace else. Where's the gold ball? I don't know. Okay. So they won the sectional title in a game against Briar Cliff, which was a very good game. Briar Cliff is very, very hard to beat. And I think everybody in the section thought Briar Cliff was going to win, and we got the big gold ball for that. They were down, and they came back again to show the mettle of this team and how wonderful they are. Then we went on, and we played a team from Highlands, from up in, up north, in northern New York State. And then we went out to Long Island, beat Matituck. And to that, they won this, the regional title, which is very, very important. And then we went up, and we beat Fredonia in the semifinals, and we lost to Seton Catholic. But they are the best public school team in New York State.
Yes.
And it was, and it was a great game. So that's the hardware. And again, they're just great, great, great kids. Couple of girls are not here tonight. Kelly Dagnan had AAU basketball practice and couldn't make it. Miranda Farnham had soccer practice and couldn't make it. And somebody else, oh. Who was it? Oh, and Abby Conklin also had AAU practice. So those three girls, I'm sure we will share any moments that we had tonight. So I'm going to start with the youngest, Grace Thible. Grace is only an eighth grader. How lucky are we?
Youngest.
And the sophomores, we, Abby Conklin, who is not here, she's at practice, and Nikki May, a freshman, excuse me, and Nikki May.
She's a freshman.
You're not in eighth grade.
She's in eighth grade.
Come on.
Congratulations.
We have, we have two sophomores. We have Mia Mascone, whose mother actually played for me, and, not that long ago, and Eva Gilbert. Yes, she does. Yes, she does. She plays amazing defense. And juniors, we have Mary Burton, Olivia Valdez, and Heather Hall. I also want to say that Mary Burton and Heather Hall were both honored as Scholar-Athletes at the all-section dinner.
Congratulations. Awesome.
And the girl who I really believe held it all together, and I don't mean from points, and I don't mean from anything else, but she held it together because she loved everybody on the team, and she respected everybody on the team, and she has no ego at all. I wish she had a little more ego. She's going to go play basketball at Geneseo next year, and we are going to miss her dearly, not for her points, but for her. Thank you, Lindsay Halpin. We should also thank Nina Dawson, who never missed a game.
Nina, how long is your run, Ben, without missing a game?
Missing games?
Yeah.
Actually, June's first-year team came was, they were three years behind me. She's coaching around her, and many of those girls were either friends, sisters, my friends, or kids that I dated back then. So I've been in June's court since she was...
That's right. That's right. But you're a lot younger. But again, thank you very, very much.
So why don't we have the girls and coaches come on up for a photo. Board, if you want to jump in there, you can.
Oh, that's right.
And I think we found the gold ball.
Oh, I seem to have.
Yeah, we're not in the picture.
Don't put us in the picture.
This is about you. We don't need to do this. Come on.
Hang on, we're lifting the screen behind us. We're turning it off there.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming all to track me, so.
So ladies, don't run yet. Don't run yet. I just want to say a few words.
I want to, I want to, like, I want to...
No, his daughter's going to be part of it.
I heard.
So Coach, 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 so just before everyone goes, you know, clearly we could go on all day about this program that is like Irvington through and through. So many people know that I'm from New Jersey and from an area where girls' basketball is huge. And when I came to Irvington five years ago, everybody said, "Ooh, Irvington." And because of girls' basketball. And every single year, I have a neighbor who coaches at West Morris Mendham in New Jersey, which is an elite program in New Jersey. And he comes in and tells me what you're doing all the time, as if I'm not here every day at work. So, you know, your legacy, the legacy of this program, goes well beyond Irvington. But what's important to note is that it's going beyond the high school. And this year, I think, you know, we should say that, you know, the team went and visited Dowslane, and we're looking at role models, right? And, you know, you are a role model on the court. You're a role model in the classroom, as Coach Marr said, with the Scholar-Athlete recognition. But rightfully so, and, you know, with the partnership with Dowslane, to have you come in and to have these young boys and girls look up to you for all that you've accomplished is an important thing. And when I look at how complex our world is and all the crazy things that are going on out there that we face on a daily basis, it means a lot that we can have kids in our community just to look up to their high school for heroes. So, you know, you're having great impressions on everybody in the community, and you've represented yourselves, your families, the program, and our school district so well. So thank you for all you've done, and congratulations on all of your accomplishments. But we know this wouldn't be there with, yeah, you know where I'm going, without an amazing coaching staff. So Mike, Barbara, but Gina, your grace, your skill, your knowledge. You know, we have programs like this because we have a lot of talented athletes, a lot of dedicated athletes. But talent and dedication doesn't get there without fire and leadership. So thank you for all you do for our program and for our kids. And now you can go if you want to.
Thank you.
Good night.
Congratulations. Good luck. That's awesome.
What a group.
Okay, where are we? Oh, all right. Back to you, Chris.
Back to me. All righty. So we begin with acknowledging our budget vote and recent trustee election. And in doing so, I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation to our school community for supporting our budget once again. And with such an overwhelming percentage of the vote in favor of the budget, 78%, really sends a nice message for the trust and the confidence that the folks in our village, villages have in our schools. So I thank everyone. I also want to extend a congratulations to Maria Kashkin, who was elected to a three-year term, which again, we looked to Mr. Whitney as a reminder that you're abandoning ship here. And we will appropriately recognize Mr. Whitney before the end of the year. Unfortunately, Mr. Whitney will not be able to attend the next meeting on June 6th due to a prior commitment. But we'll make sure we catch Mr. Whitney at our second meeting in June to be able to applaud his six years on the board. There was a second proposition on the ballot this year, which was to expand the board to seven members, which was also approved. And these will be terms that will run, two new terms that will run from July 12th of 2017 to June 30th of 2020. If anyone in the community is interested in running for the school board nominating, petitions are now available, and they can be picked up in the district clerk's office from 8:00 to 3:30 p.m. on weekends, and they must be returned by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, weekdays, yes, that would help, Monday, the 12th. A special registration for residents who are not already registered with the district or Board of Elections will be held on Thursday, July 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00 at the district office. One thing that I assume will be of particular interest to many folks in the community because of the date of election, which will be, again, July 11th, is absentee ballots. The process for requesting an absentee ballot is consistent with budget votes in all of our prior elections. Application must be submitted to Elaine, our district clerk, prior to receiving the ballot, which will be available after June 13th. There are some important deadlines that everybody in the community should be aware of. July 3rd, the application must be received if the ballot is to be mailed. Applications must be received by July 10th if the ballot is to be picked up by the voter. And July 11th, all ballots must be received by 5:00 p.m. This information will continue to be disseminated on district communication tools to make sure everybody's well informed. I do want to provide a couple updates related to logo selection process and website updates. As the community is aware, the board opened up the design process to current and former Irvington students. And included in this will also be the previously proposed district logo. It's pretty exciting to see that as of our deadline on Friday, we received 17 different designs, inclusive of 16 additional designs, that are going to be considered by a committee that's representative of our students and staff. Tomorrow afternoon in this very room, we are going to have a meeting of the selection committee, which has 10 students on the committee, six staff members, and then Catherine, myself, and Michael will be there. We also have the designer that worked with us just there, not a voting voice at all, just to answer any questions that the group may have about web feasibility and how designs may need to be tweaked, so on and so forth. But is there as a resource to the committee not to influence any decision-making. We have students from each of our schools. When I say we have 10 students, we have our student council president and vice president from the high school, and then two students from each school. We pushed out an application process where kids just submitted their names that had to be in. Today, we pulled all those names. The principals threw them into a hat and randomly drew names. So we have an additional eight students that'll be representing all four schools. From the work tomorrow, the effort will be to determine the top five to six designs that will go out for staff and student vote the end of next week. And from that vote, we'll determine a group of finalists that then will come to the board for consideration for next steps. So it's been, you know, certainly a longer process than we originally planned, but it's really impressive to see the level of student voice that's entering the equation. We have students that have submitted ideas individually. We have elementary students that have submitted concepts, some that are, you know, colored pencil that are translated into graphic design for website. We have groups of students that work together as well. So there's some, you know, individual talents coming out and some collaboration, which is great. So we look forward to an update at the next Board of Education meeting. An update on our website, due to the fact that we pivoted here with the logo, we've altered our process a little bit. But we found a way to continue to move forward with designing the website, building it less any kind of logo on it. So our partner at Blackboard, School Wires, is in the process of designing all the different templates and the functionality of the website. But as a result, our goal of rolling out the district homepage by the end of the school year is not going to be met. Our objective is looking more like September at this point in time. But we will be updating the board as we progress throughout the summer, of course. I also want to just make a gentle statement about our kids. It was great to see the girls' basketball team here this evening to celebrate all their hard work and accomplishment. But I could probably go on for the next 20 minutes about all the great achievement of students in the Irvington School District, you know, ranging from musical performances over the last couple of weeks to piles and piles of students that are achieving all kinds of amazing feats academically, competitions across the country. You know, I think it's tomorrow or tonight, we have DI going across the country to go compete. Just so exciting. So, you know, I certainly can't go on and list everything tonight, but just really want to encourage the community to stay dialed into our Facebook page, where you see all this news constantly flowing out. I think last week, we had, our number of views on the Facebook page was up like 6,000, which is huge to think of the size of our community, right? And then to top it off, we have staff that are doing great things. You know, to highlight one, we have Susan Wallace, one of our great Main Street school teachers, who was named one of the lower Hudson Regional Information Centers Tell Award winners for innovative teaching. And she was just recognized at a ceremony two weeks ago in Briar Cliff. So, you know, if you want to read more about that, hit the website or the Facebook page. Just so many wonderful things here in a tremendous school district. We're going to have the opportunity to recognize some of these amazing adults in our children's lives at the next board meeting on the 6th, where we'll honor our retirees. We have a number of folks retiring. We had a retirement dinner last week, which was a lot of fun and a lot of touching moments celebrating the careers of so many great professionals. But we're going to have a chance to celebrate them one more time, and then also to congratulate our tenure recipients. So celebrating the impactful careers and looking down the road to growing more careers that will change our students' academic futures. But before we jump off of acknowledgement, we do have one little item from New York State School Boards that came in, and it is to our board president, Catherine, for her participation and her professional learning with school boards and totaling 75 points of training in leadership development. So congratulations, Catherine. And a reminder to first-year board members that deadlines, first-year board members, deadlines are approaching to complete your training if you have not done so already. The final thing?
Oh, yeah. Second to final thing?
Second to final thing.
I think one of our biggest Facebook posts had to do with our slavitarian and valedictorian.
It one of them, it was, and we will be recognizing them at an upcoming Board of Education meeting as well.
Very exciting.
Yes, 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 there are definitely over 2,000 views on that. Then just as one reminder before I pass it to Carol, is that just a reminder that it is a long Memorial Day weekend, and I hope everyone enjoys some rest and downtime. School and the district will be closed Friday and Monday, and we do have a delayed opening on Tuesday for some opportunity for curriculum work for our faculty. So Carol, you have a couple of dates?
Sure, just a little bit. East field, if you've had a chance to go down there.
Beautiful.
It is now green.
Yeah.
And that's huge progress for us. They're seeding tomorrow, but the places that, any part where you see dirt will have now hydroseed, so it's like a seed that has water within and hopefully grows pretty quickly. So we're really encouraged by that. We do have to keep that field closed, as we talked about in prior meetings, and we've put out to the community. We're going to try to do our best to monitor that, but it can be out there every minute, so we're hoping the community will honor that.
Just a question, is it possible? I know that there's a fence on one side. Is it possible, like we did with the track, to get that tall orange fencing?
We have to, they're still finishing the seeding and that, and we actually still have that fencing.
Okay. Oh, good. Recycling.
Gary's going to be looking at using that again. So we have had that conversation. But I just want to reiterate Carol's point, that it is critical that everybody in this community step up and take ownership of East Field. No one should be going on that field. You will see our staff out there periodically performing maintenance, doing inspections of the field. You know, we have a beautiful irrigation system out there, wonderful drainage. So with the care of our staff and the oversight of land tech, we should have a beautiful field. But we need everyone's cooperation to stay off of it. That's no, you know, just going through a stroll and walking through the field. We shouldn't be walking dogs, absolutely no bicycles or any powerized, motorized vehicles out there. We've been in close communication with the police department, who has already begun to increase patrols, inspecting it, make sure no one is there. But at the end of the day, it comes down to us as a community to make sure we protect this investment. So we encourage everyone to step up. If you see anyone out in the field, please report it to the district office. Or if it's after hours or on a weekend, please call the police department, because they are prepared to respond. The mayor is also planning on sending out a message, reinforcing the message that the district sent out last week as well, because we do see this as a community asset. We're also in the process of installing some security cameras that will be on the field to be able to capture any trespassers that may head out there. So we just have to really rally together and make sure we protect this field. It will not go online for use until fall of 2018, so we're going to have to be patient. But that patience is going to pay off in a beautiful field. I do want to say that when you look around the perimeter of the field, there is not grass in spots, as Carol indicated, we're going to be seeding. That seed will take naturally, because we don't have irrigation that's designed to cover off of the plain surface. There are also areas where there is sod in place that extends beyond the irrigation. The sod was put there deliberately to control irrigation, understanding there's a possibility some of that can die. The contractors are actually overseeding on that, just to promote additional growth. Their philosophy in putting some sod down, anticipating it could die, was the sod will act as a mat to eliminate any potential erosion, and the new grass will grow through that. So if you see something around the perimeter not looking right, it's okay. But it's all part of the plan. But the drainage has been great. And if you peer down the hill, don't walk on the field and look at it, I think you'll be quite impressed.
The program, we have the rec department to monitor fields. Will they be monitoring?
We're close to implementing that. We've worked up an agreement. I've sent down them a draft, actually, today. We will prepare something for us. So we, I think we'll be able to start that really soon. So everybody's on board, and it's actually just a dot and a i now. So we're good there. The final step for the construction project is the staging area, which we may start either later this week or next week. So that's really the last piece of it, and I'll be happy to, because I take up my time. But it's been a good project, so I think we're actually great results. The only other thing I'll bring up is audit season. It's right now, we started our external audit, which I think I've told you about. They had a week of, not even quite a week, a couple of days of preliminary testing. So far, so good on that. The rest of that audit will be done in late July. And then they've prepared financial statements for probably the month of August and early September. And then you guys will have our financial report and everything in early September sometime. So that's scheduled on moving pretty much the exact same timeframe as last year. The internal audit, which is the more of a risk assessment audit, that's happening starting probably the first week of June. It's a little bit late. They were backlog with a lot of districts. I guess they took on more than they had staff for. And so there, it's just going, interviewing people, looking at our risk levels. It's really just more of a requirement that we do this. But if you do have any particular issues or areas you would like the internal audit to take a look at, you can either let me know, and I'll convey that to them, or you can let them know directly.
Right. Didn't last year with this internal audit, we selected an area?
Yeah, last year was special ed. So this year is more of a general, and then you can select another area for next year again. So we'll be doing another selected or special area. So you kind of, actually what you do is you wait till you see the risk assessment, and then from there, you look for the selection of another area to look at on a more detailed level.
Okay.
So choose. If you don't, then you can just do a more general one again.
Okay.
Great. And I just want to say before we move on with the agenda that Carol has done a spectacular job in stepping in with this project and really grabbing the reins. And I got to tell you, you don't want to mess with her. She is an Irvington bulldog. And she is on these contractors and really working to get this done. So she's done a tremendous job. So she's done a tremendous job. And, you know, with the year wrapping up, you know, I just consider myself to be very fortunate to work with such a dedicated, talented team in Raina and Carol. And we're really seeing ourselves grow as a unit and have a tremendous partnership. And I think it's important that the community know that and the board hear that, because you have a really dedicated team, and I think we enjoy working with each other too. So it makes work really pleasurable, so we have a great group.
Well, Chris, you actually didn't have to tell us, we saw.
But you set the bar so high, seventy-eight percent approval, I mean, next year?
Yeah, exactly.
It was really well done.
Good budget.
Okay. Any other updates?
Yep, that's good for now.
Which brings us to time for a comment from the community. Anyone want to make any comments? Yes, please.
I'm Nina Caprell-Dawson, I live at seventy-six Hudson Ave. And early today, I became aware of a situation concerning our school district that I found very disappointing. Namely that the high school marching band is not performing in the Memorial Day Parade. I know the band director is out on maternity, that began in January, this is May. It left more than enough time to make necessary preparations. It's Memorial Day. This is where we, it's in remembrance of those who gave their lives for our country. The War Memorial Monument on Main Street lists the names of the men, village residents, most of them Irvington High School graduates. And unfortunately, there are some names which bear a star indicating the ultimate sacrifice. It's been a long-established tradition that the marching band performs in the ceremony honoring these men, which is why I'm here to ask the question, what can be done to remedy the situation?
So I can say, Nina, with in all honesty, the situation first came to my attention this afternoon. And I don't know if there's that opportunity to change the course of whatever decisions were made by the ceremony this weekend. But you can trust that the situation is being reviewed. And I can tell you as your superintendent, as a, you know, a team member here in Irvington, as an American citizen. I was really disappointed to hear that news when it was brought to my attention late this afternoon. And certainly disappointment on a couple of different levels. Not only that we wouldn't be participating in this memorable, important experience, but that there was some things that either slipped through the crack or didn't have the focus that they should have. So in all honesty, you know, I was disappointed and only became aware of the situation this afternoon. And you can trust that I am already beginning to follow up on it. But to manage expectation, I don't know what the result can or will be, but just know that I certainly am already looking into it.
I do appreciate that, and I, my daughters all performed in the parade. I've been village resident, I've been to the parade many times, and I know that that music, and I don't think it has changed, it's the same music that they performed in the fall. So it's not any new music that needs to be learned. And in the past, when it has happened, some other faculty members was like a chaperone, and some of the seniors led the band. So that's an option that I find, that I would like to propose as something that could be done to remedy the situation. But I think it's, at this point, I just find it very disturbing, particularly with everything that's happening in our world today, that it's an opportunity to really keep the lines of communication open and really have the young people there watching the vets and perform and be part of it. And to stand tall and pledge allegiance to that flag and be there, I think that move mountains if need be, but get that band there. I speak as village resident, I speak as village historian, I speak as a faculty member. I really feel very strongly about it.
Nina, you're, I'm not giving you a lip service. Your concerns are heard and they have resonated with me. And I think Elaine could attest to the emotion I displayed when I learned of it this afternoon. And again, I can't make any promises, because my understanding is that there has been another band scheduled as well. So, you know, there becomes a complicated political situation on different levels. So we have to see what we can do and see how we arrived at this point. While I can't set expectation for what will happen this weekend, I can tell you that expectation will be set certainly moving forward.
Well, I don't know if you are aware, but that the band, the fife and drum corps to which you refer, has always tandemed with the high school band. They had their, you know, they did one performance, the band would perform. I think our students were the ones that played taps, which was very moving to have their names in the ceremony, et cetera.
That's correct.
So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Okay, brings us to the consent agenda. No, no, sorry.
There's a discussion.
We have some discussion and updates.
District topics.
Yes, okay.
So throughout the course of any school year, normal course of business, there's a number of topics that pop up in meetings, questions that are surfaced offline with board questions that come up. And we kind of try to keep track of them, and we come back around and want to make sure we're closing some loops here and to make sure that, you know, we're addressing topics or questions that the board may have. So going by that list, I want to kind of walk through some of these items and provide the board and community with some updates. And certainly invite my colleagues to jump in to supplement any of the comments that I have to offer. Specifically, some of the items have surfaced in recent meetings. East Field, we've continued to provide some regular updates, and we'll continue to do so all the way until that field is playable on another year. So I apologize, you're going to continue to hear about East Field. Transportation, there had been discussion in this room on multiple occasions with respect to concerns in and around route efficiency, early pickup times for our high school students in particular that were quite unacceptable and continue to be. In particular, we have some students that are being picked up around six-thirty in the morning and arriving at the high school well before their first class period. During our budget process, we did discuss some options where we could make some real adjustments to our tier transportation system to ensure that no students were picked up before seven a.m. But there was a cost associated with that, and the board elected not to move forward. But our promise was to put together a group of community members that were going to look more deeply into the situation. And Carol has been leading the charge on that, provided a couple of updates over the last two meetings, I believe. And we actually have a first committee meeting scheduled for next week, next Wednesday. And we're going to kind of outline a charge for the committee to consider the types of areas that we want to consider reviewing to have as much possible impact as possible. Aside from Carol and myself, we have some administrators there to provide a school lens on the arrival and pickup, because they're the ones that see a lot of that very closely. But we have a representative group of parents that will be there, not only representing different school levels, but different parts of the school district. And our transportation leadership from Ardsley will also be present. So we will provide the board with some regular updates on this work. The first meeting is really kind of defining scope and focus of what's going to happen. And then we are going to identify a pretty aggressive meeting schedule to try to seek opportunities for improvement. If there's any low-hanging fruit, we can address for September. And then if there's bigger picture items that would involve decision-making from the board, decision-making by the broader school district public, all that will come forward in a presentation to the Board of Education.
Can I ask a question? So with regard to transportation, is the group that's going to convene only going to look at schedules and times and routes for transportation to our schools? Are we also going to be looking at our private school runs as well as special ed runs?
Right now, the focus is the in district.
Okay, so when we, when you were saying earlier that the scope will be defined, is that something that we can consider also looking at? Because the concern that I have is not only do we have a transportation cost and efficiency and program, if you will, that surrounds transportation from our schools to our in district students. I also think that it's probably worthwhile to consider at least whether we want to look at the transportation associated with the runs for private school as well as special ed, because that also is something like a one-point-two-million-dollar expenditure. And I don't know when the last time this board or district has looked at that to make sure that that also is efficient, that those runs are also the best that they can be.
Yeah, so one, and I think that's a fantastic point and something that we're absolutely open to doing. You know, we're, in the first meeting, one of the discussions or presentations we're going to have is from Ardsley about the methodology and practices that they employ to plan our bus routes and their software and the like that's utilized. Some of the challenges more so with special education than with private school runs is looking at changes in student placements. And, you know, there's flux then in costs to respective school districts. But the one item that we've put out there, and I want to remind the board and public that through the budget process, we have retained some money to have an independent audit of our bus routes. And that would be not to undermine the work of the folks in Ardsley, but to ensure that we're taking advantage of any opportunities that may be there. And I think a part of that would include those private and special ed runs.
If I understood correctly, you were thinking you might update us in the fall? And I guess I'm just curious, it's a tough topic, so I'm curious to hear as you go along what the directions you may be going. Because, you know, obviously, it was a challenging effort this year, and ultimately, the solution that was brought forward was one that the board wasn't quite ready to support. So it'd be great to sort of be able to track that progress this time around.
Yeah, so, and I think, considering that we're going into summer, and we know that there's challenges in meeting during the summer. And as is with most Boards of Education, we slow down with our meetings during the summer, so we'll have a reorganization meeting in July, and then we have one scheduled regular meeting in August. Primarily due to the fact that it's hard to be able to pull together a quorum. And so we will have some meetings if we need to pull some folks together for hiring purposes or if there's any emerging situations. But I'll, Carol, if you could make note to come up, we'll come up with a communication strategy that not only will keep the board abreast through regular communications, but I think there would be, there's some importance in making sure that we're sharing some progress beyond, you know, the inner circle of the board and administration and committee.
Great.
So we'll, we certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Food service was another topic that has been of interest, and as Carol reported the last meeting, I believe, that, you know, we certainly have been looking for opportunities to enhance our existing food service program. As was advised by a food service consultant that we work with on a regular basis in Aramark. There's been recommendation not to go out for an RFP because there's, as you've seen in the press, that the National Lunch Program, there's anticipated shifts there. And we don't want to develop a contract with a provider that may not be compliant with those standards. But that doesn't mean that we're sitting back and waiting for the federal government to guide enhancement in our program. Carol has been meeting with Aramark leadership, and we actually had, I think it was a VP out a week and a half ago. First time we ever met her, first time I've met her in five years in district. And they're really committed to looking for opportunities to enhance experiences. Dave Alberts, who is our site manager, has been out visiting other school districts, looking for ideas that they may have. We've had some, you know, some pilots this year that have been really successful, such as introducing smoothies on the campus. So we're looking at opportunities to expand that to the elementary schools. We're also looking at some upgrades to equipment that would provide us opportunity to prepare different types of meals. They're going to develop a schedule where they're going to be piloting additional meals throughout the course of next year. We actually, within our contract, are running a bit of a surplus because they've been performing very well in that we're going to be able at no charge upgrade some products that have whole white, or they say in the industry, whole muscle chicken serve for nuggets and things like that.
We started that in April.
In April. So we're able to do things like that that typically would be an upcharge in contract or in meal price. We're able to do that within the constraints of our existing contract. They're coming back with some proposals in and around different concepts for salad bar and salad stations that we're looking to unveil for this fall. So we're excited to see not only our program still moving ahead, but also looking at the real ownership that I'm seeing Aramark, or we're beginning to see Aramark take, and hearing that Irvington has higher expectations and wanting a better product for our kids. So as the year approaches, I'm sure Carol has some good news that we'll be able to share. And I think that would be something not only would we share through the board in our meeting in August, but that we certainly would be pushing out to parents in our opening newsletters from the district or from schools.
I have a quick, just check in, because I talked about school bucks a little bit, and we had a couple of issues with school bucks this year down at Towns Lane.
My school bucks?
Yeah, my school bucks. Where, you know, the parents were receiving a balance, but then there was no balance, could we get food?
That was really more of a technology issue than the program.
So it's not the food program?
So we ironed that out. It's sometimes the program, when it loads to our program, it has a hiccup, so we've, you know, we have to really make sure we watch that.
I just want to make sure that kids continue to get lunch.
And if it does happen, we can spread away, but yeah.
Cool.
But to your point, and Dave, I heard the comment that you made very lowly to softly make sure that kids are getting lunch. And our, you know, especially in elementary school, you know, staff in the cafeteria is really mindful to make sure we don't have children sitting there without food in front of them. And there's lots of protocols we go through to give a child a meal, and if it reoccurs, the communication that then occurs with parents to make sure there isn't a hardship. And if there is, how we can intervene to support. You know, going back almost about two months ago, there, we had issued what was a, I referred to as a leadership letter on the topic of drug concerns in our school community, because that's what we can control, that's what we can influence. And certainly when we speak to concerns around drug use and related risky behaviors, it's a concern that goes well beyond the borders of Irvington and Tarrytown. So we authored a very strong letter that was designed to draw reaction. And it drew, I think, the response that I was looking for. And in speaking to a number of other folks, and I can tell you that we had an I.A.S.C. coalition meeting this morning, the response that the mayor was looking for, the Police Department, I.A.S. leadership. Because a lot of folks are asking questions and wanting to understand and wanting to know more. We've had a smaller meeting with school district leadership and village leadership to discuss our concerns and areas where we would like to see some increased partnership. But more importantly, today, I gained real commitment and partnership from the village, the Police Department, and I.A.S. to move forward with what we see as a responsible, and I don't know if I would define it as ambitious, because it should be an obligation for us as a community, but a responsible educational program that we're going to be bringing to our school community next year. In doing so, we're looking at a couple of different facets. First and foremost, we are in the process of scheduling a presentation that will be held likely in the town theater, in the town hall theater in the end of September. And the purpose of that presentation will be to unveil drug survey data, drug and alcohol data related to students in Irvington who have completed two surveys, and first in two thousand fourteen, second in two thousand sixteen. And we want to report the feed- And we want to report the feedback that we've received from students on drug, alcohol, tobacco use, and also perceptions around that use. And when we talk about perceptions, we're looking at peer perceptions and parental perceptions, and how all of those items line up. So we are going to push out a message that will be community-wide, trying to engage folks to be able to attend that meeting. We think it'll really serve as a great launching pad for future programs. We're developing a concept of a couple wellness events throughout the year. The first will be a community-wide event where we're going to have like a keynote speaker and a series of breakout sessions, and they'll be designed to target different areas and maybe different audiences, so parents can find a comfortable entry point. Coupled with that will be programming that'll be targeted directly to our students as well. So we're looking at different tiers here, right? Broad community program, looking at kind of getting the facts and the numbers out there as we see usage in our community and the concerns that are present in our community. And then an educational component with some targeted learning that'll be available for parents and students, evening and daytime events. And then we'll follow it up with a similar program in the spring that will have a different, more balanced approach, looking at a couple of different entry points on the subject. We're also exploring some other opportunities, such as kind of looking at some of those times in our students' secondary academic career where there's milestones and turning points. And interestingly enough, whereas the community sees the data that'll be presented in September, that we, some of those academic milestones line up with periods where we see upticks in drug use and shifts in perception. So we're looking for opportunities where we can really try to integrate some more learning for kids. We've been batting around an idea with our partners at I.A.S.C. to develop some type of informative videos that could be developed by kids, that'd be followed by like little quizzes, that kids and their parents would have to complete to be able to pass on to whatever that event or stage in their academic career might be. So to kind of shape this and frame this, there's going to be a follow-up letter that is going to be released, and I'm going to begin working on a draft of it with the rest of the leadership team in the community next week. And we're going to get that message out before the end of the school year, setting expectations for September and what will come for the rest of the year. But in doing so, establishing a commitment that this is going to be an ongoing focus for the Irvington school community. So I think it's important that we have those partners and we set those real expectations for ourselves, to hold ourselves accountable, and as I said before, responsible.
Sounds great. Question I have is cost associated with this program as you lay it out, is this something that's going to be covered by the I.A.S.C. grant?
Yes, so it's good that you asked that. We actually have a couple more years of funding in the grant, but...
How does it work, Chris? So we were given a certain time, number of years of funding?
Yeah, five years of funding at $125,000 a year. So I believe there's two more years of funding. There's also rollover funds from unexpendited funds that will move forward from this year. So in reality, if you just look at the first cycle of this grant, the first five years, there realistically be money that'll carry forward into year six. The design of the grant is really intended to be able to provide school or communities funding for a 10-year window, that there's tremendous success in grant renewal for a second cycle. They do not fund it beyond the second cycle, so years 11 and beyond. So the objective is to build a base, to be able to come up with sustaining programs that can support the types of activities that we've implemented going forward. So I think we're in a transition stage, and I want to say that, you know, I'm on the board or whatever you would call it for the coalition, but it's driven, it's a community-based grant that the village of Irvington owns. So we have to begin to start to make that transition and develop a sequence of programs that we're going to be committed to, and hence this initiative and other programs such as pre-prom program and things like that that they have been funding. And if we're going to maintain a set of core programming, that we now have to start to develop the mechanism to fund that.
Is it in year two or year three?
Year three of the grant. One piece of good news that actually came out, and the chief of police sent an email around to the coalition this afternoon, in the president's proposed budget, the cuts to this division, and I can't, it's like two different sections of the government, health and human services type section, didn't see the cuts that were originally foreshadowed. So where there isn't specific information about the grant, previous information was leading everyone to believe that there were going to be dramatic cuts, that these grants would go away. But as there's, you know, analysis of the budget coming out, professional organizations have been starting to release statements that it doesn't appear to be at the level of risk that was previously presented. So we think there's opportunity that the second cycle of grants will become a reality.
So if we're in year three of the five year, and we got, and the funding was 125, that means that we'll be applying for another five years?
Another five years and...
Probably within the year?
It would be the year after next.
Year four.
No, it'd be year five.
At the way to the end?
In year five, yes. Yeah, there's a series of reports and everything they have to go through, the accounts are audited through the folks in the village and through their typical auditing practices. And then there's narrative reports that are, that are created by the I.A.S.C. leadership that's then presented to the governing agencies.
But the money actually goes to the village, not to the district?
Correct.
And my last question was, in return for the grant and for the way it's set up, you had mentioned that there were two surveys done, 2014 and 2016. Is that one of the conditions of the grant?
Yeah, every two years, there has to be a survey performed that measures drug, alcohol, there are four different areas. It's drug use, alcohol use, tobacco use, and perceptions around use.
So does that mean the next survey to be done would be in...
Fall 2018.
2018.
Yes.
Based on some of the information that you may be seeing, would it make sense to look at doing one also in between, in 2017, the fall? If that's when they're done?
I don't think it would be for me. It's something to certainly consider and a conversation to have with the group, but they're expensive. So the first past, we did a survey in 2014. We went with a free service that was offered through the state of New York, and we were less than satisfied with their process and their control and organization of the data, which required months and months of work on our end to be able to make sense out of it. So this past year, there was a survey that was generated using a nationally normed set of questions, but I.A.S.C. is paying for that, and it is a costly endeavor. So that would be certainly a consideration that I could bring back to the group to see.
I mean, I guess if I'm hearing that there's some concern that, you know, led you to raise the sort of the level of attention in the community to this issue, and there's concern about that initial survey, I would be very interested to hear if it makes sense to do that.
Yeah, that's certainly a consideration I could bring back to the committee.
So the I.A.S.C. money for the last three years has been spent on what?
I can't speak to all the accounting of it, but there's been...
But generally speaking, was it...
Numerous, numerous activities. They endorse a lot of community events, Color Run, for example, they support that. There's the pre-prom party. They pay for, if you remember last year, the whole program with Ty Sales, when he came in and gave community presentations, worked in our schools.
There's a mailer that went to, I think, all homes in Irvington, right?
Yeah, there's, there's supportive programs like that. There's also, there's also other layers of programming where they've sent student leaders off to a number of retreats, which I know, I want to say it's like $4,500 a year. And the students come back and are then engaging their ideas and learning in our programs in the schools, their support of the Safe Rides program. There's a number of different things, and I'm sure we could get a copy of the year-end reports to share with the board.
I think that's probably a good idea. I would like to see what they've spent the money, not only because if we're going to invest our own resources and time, we may want to get a sense of how expensive some of the things that they did in the past that work, that we're going to be, keep that the, our community may be looking to us to continue, and it may become a budget item down the road.
Well, one of the initiatives that I've personally held and have been very deliberate in my communications is that this needs to be a community-wide endeavor. And in my communication with the mayor, with the village administrator, the police department, is that this school district cannot do this alone, and that the programming that we develop needs to be able to become sustainable, and that there needs to be, and I've expressed more targeted use of the funds, to ensure that it's reinforcing positive, positive healthy lifestyles. A lot of their work has been in and around publicity and information and education. So you think of the ads that have been in newspapers, the mailers that were referenced, the stickers on pizza boxes, things along those lines. It's in and around community education. So that's like a real passive approach that should be in the background, but I think our efforts need to become more targeted and deliberate moving forward.
So you mean to say that what we're going to do now is we're going to finally educate our kids that drugs and alcohol are bad, and they're unaware of that? I guess what I'm frustrated in is that I think we do an awful lot around DARE, around other kinds of drug programs, and we spend a lot of time, and I don't think there's a student in our school who thinks that drugs are a healthy choice or alcohol's a healthy choice, and yet we continue to see kids, and it feels to me that over the years where I.A.S.C. have been running these programs, that things have gotten worse, not better. So I'm not sure throwing more money at education is necessarily the answer. And I guess, you know, listening, I am frustrated. I'm frustrated because I feel that we're dancing around the challenges, and we're, you know, as educators, we're thinking that education's the answer. But I don't think that there's a student in Irvington who doesn't, who isn't aware of the dangers of drugs and alcohol and cigarettes and all the rest of it. I would wander the halls and I'd buttonhole any, pigeonhole any one of them, buttonhole any one of them and ask, "Do you think smoking is good for you?" And I guarantee you every single one of them would say, "No, it's not." So what do we think is going to change if we're spending another $125,000 on this?
Can I ask a question? Just to tack on to it a little bit.
Yeah, no, my question's rhetorical.
What's the, that's why I ask. What is the, do we, does that, does this work take any approach with adults? Just curious. I'm just thinking about, you know, what Catherine just said about, you know, education, you know, and just thinking about the sort of current, I hate to use the word scourge on camera and on the microphone, but I will, the scourge of, you know, painkiller, painkillers and prescription drugs and the like. And, you know, knowing, you know, that sort of the pipeline of that generally is because parents are on for injury or for surgery or whatever it might be, kid gets a hold of it, right, like that whole story. So I just wonder what the work with adults is, if there is any, if not, is that maybe something, you know, to your point, Catherine, right, that could, we could take it to another level?
I agree. I could just jump in on that.
Please, go ahead.
Because I think we're, the three of us are probably thinking the same thing. The parent piece, the education to the parent of the risks involved in hosting parties and keeping prescription drugs in houses, both criminal liability and otherwise, that is a piece I don't feel that has been done yet by I.A.S.C., and that may be a good idea to bring back to the board. If that's the one education piece that's not directed to the students but is directed to parents. The other piece is, I think that's related to what you're both saying, is how much are we educating our coaches as to the significance of any suspected drug use or alcohol use or being on the weekends before a game, after a game, homecoming? And what are the repercussions for that if the coach suspects that the students are breaking the law?
Well, and not just suspects, what do we, what happens when students are actually detained by the police? We have zero consequences. And I thought one of the things that we discussed with the community was that while we don't want to have a punitive approach to this, I do think that there should be consequences. The message that every student in high school, and I think other parents of high schoolers will agree to this, is that the students believe there are no consequences, that if you deal drugs, if you take drugs, if you smoke, whatever, there are no consequences. And they have countless examples to point to. And that's unfortunate. I mean, again, my goal is not to arrest any students. My goal is to say, okay, there should be consequences, and where we have the code of conduct, if now you've been detained or caught or whatever, then you have to attend one of these programs, or you have to do some community service or something, where you understand that we do draw the line, and we're not just going to turn a blind eye and, you know, have another keynote speaker come and tell you how bad drugs are. Because, again, every high school student has heard it, every high school student could spew the facts back to you. I don't think that's making a difference.
So I'm hearing a few different things. And one, I think we continue to have the responsibility to provide education to our students. And there's an aspect of it that I can appreciate, that there's, you know, that we're preaching to kids that may already be well-informed and well-educated. But there are dangers and transitions in society that are affecting perceptions in and around drugs, such as legalization of marijuana, the medical use of marijuana, risks associated with prescription pills. The popularity around vaping, for example, is something that is becoming a large concern across the nation. And not only the addiction to nicotine that's used in those vaping devices, but also the infusion of drugs into the vaping devices, such as hash oil and things along those lines. So I think there's value in continuing to provide education there. Deb, to your point with respect to education around true parents about consequences, there was a forum that we hosted last spring that included the Irvington Police Department, Judge Lyons, a ER doc, and a couple of other experts on the subject. So we did have a targeted effort. Where I think the, there's a couple of voids here, is that in a lot of these scenarios, it seems that the school district is left as the only entity that is able to intervene and be able to apply consequences, so to speak. And I can tell you from a school district standpoint, there have been a handful of situations in my five years where we have had students that have either been under the influence of a substance or in possession of a substance. And in each of those cases, through our disciplinary process, I don't want to say "I," our administrative team has worked very closely, and in a lot of ways, taken advantage of the system to be able to not just give kids consequences, but to be able to bring opportunities for them to enhance their lives and eliminate risky behaviors. In those scenarios, we have had the opportunity through agreements with parents and the students to enroll students in treatment programs, some inpatient, some outpatient. We've had students that participate when they return to school and successfully complete a program, random drug testing for a defined period of time, because it certainly can't be forever, and then other support services such as ongoing counseling in and out of the school and a variety of other interventions. So from a school district standpoint, we're taking advantage of opportunity there to do that. I think you highlight a good point with respect to coaches. There is a need to review our activities code of conduct, and there is some effort underway to address that. But one of the challenges that we really have with that is the activities code of conduct points to behaviors that, you know, if a student was to be involved in drug or alcohol use outside of the school day. So if it happens within the confines of the school day on school property, it's a no-brainer in how we manage it, and we have a track record of doing that well for the five years I've been here, and I would assume for many years prior to my arrival. The challenge is, how do you acquire information on events that happen outside of school to be able... be able to think it's a reasonable effort on the school district to be able to intervene? And where are we gathering that information that is fact-based? Because you could go on rumors and we could be pursuing things all day long and we never get to our day job, so to speak. So herein lies, I think, the conflict that Catherine highlights is what can be done in the community on a broader sense. And, you know, it's a discussion that the board can certainly introduce, but it's a conversation that goes beyond us and it has to go to, to our village leadership. And if there are strong opinions on that, and I know board leadership and I have expressed our personal perspectives with village leadership, I think whether it's done in a formal sense or is building up from the presentation in September, the, the message needs, needs to be sent loud and clear.
Well, and I, you know, I think one of the things that Deb said about communication to the parents about their liability, I, I do think that's worth communicating that, you know, what New York state law is around serving alcohol to minors and, you know, if those minors or if anyone leaves your home, gets into an accident, you bear the liability because you served them the alcohol. I mean, those are things that I think most people aren't aware of.
That's actually a really good, made me think of something like, so when we have like dire circumstances, and I don't know if we're quite dire yet, but it's certainly growing in that direction, right? You know, we hit the community in the street and it's, right? And so like, I wonder if like we talk to the local stores and the gas station guy, you know, and, and, and the, the Rite Aid down in Tarrytown and just like, it's like, hey, if you see my kids coming in, you know, just let you know, here's my face, who I am. Those things actually make a difference.
I can tell you, I can tell you I've done that. So we've gone to, over the time that I've been here, we've gone to liquor stores. Allison Felix, one of the co-chairs of IASK, she and I last month went to the Shell Station and really challenged them and pushed them on the sale of the vapor devices, I don't know what, the Jules, which are the high-end chic devices that I, I guess kids want to use. And we were there for such a time that I got a real inside view of their operation, their security measures and their POS system, where they literally can pull up, and then he was randomly pulling up sales of all the devices. And when you click on any device that they sell in these types of stores today, and I had no idea this existed, they literally, you put in a SKU of a product and it comes up all the transactions over whatever the window of time that you enter. And he, you literally go through and you're going through and you can click those individual dates and times of sales and it pulls up the picture of who was buying it, who was buying it, who was buying it. And, and then you're there, you can pursue and you can see what else they bought. And, and I got to tell you, literally everyone that he, he, I sat there and he randomly clicked and clicked and it was like people that looked like all of us sitting around the table. There weren't kids coming in. They, locally, they communicated a commitment to not selling, they make like candy-flavored inserts that go in these, like literally like Sour Patch Kids and things like that. They're committed to not selling those types of devices there. But you could get in a car and you can go to a smoke shop in Dobbs Ferry, you can go to the Speedway on the corner in Tarrytown and they, they have a whole wall of those kinds of things. So we try to have some influence where we can, but it is a, a good idea. On the edu-parent education front, one thing that I actually read about a couple of weeks ago, and I brought to CAB and IASK, and it's going to be a pursuit for next year in one of these programs, is there's a whole series, if you just Google like hidden in plain sight, you can buy thousands of different types of devices online where you can go and hide drugs in what it looks like an everyday object. From a Dasani water bottle that literally says Dasani on it, to hair clips for a girl, to brushes that unscrew, that are flasks or whatever the case may be. So there's a, an actual interactive experience that I read about where they set up a, the group that comes in sets up like a, a mock-up of a, a kid's bedroom. And you go through and you tour it. And then at the, at the end, after you have the experience, they go through and unveil like all these dozens of hidden in plain sight type devices that are in the room. And then they go deeper into looking at the additional ways that kids traditionally would hide drugs. And they send that kind of message, you see? They send the kind of message, you know, in coaching parents that, you know, it's your house, it's your, your dresser that your child stores his or her clothes in, that you should be pulling out the drawers and looking under the drawers. You should be pulling out the inner soles of your kid's shoes every once in a while to see what's there. And they go through and really empower parents to kind of take control of that home environment.
Sometimes it's the buddy with the backpack coming in.
What's that?
Sometimes it's the friend with the backpack coming in.
It could be any number.
Book safe is quite scary.
There's, there's so many different things there to look at.
Well, again, that would be a great communication to the parents, you know. I, I agree on the parents' communication.
On the parent piece, I think too, there's, you know, some of it may be the, the timing of the messaging. So a postcard that arrives on a Wednesday may not have the impact of a message that arrives in someone's smartphone on a Friday night.
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. And, and, you know, that, that, the, the event you referenced with, with all the local, the doctor, the police, the, the judge, it was a great event. That and some of the other events were, were excellent. But I, I think we've heard that it draws the parents that already want to be responsible and maybe not reaching the other set of parents that we'd like to reach with this kind of message. So I think that's part of the trick is how do we get a, a different kind of audience that's not, not coming to those events? And one of the things I'm really happy to hear is that, you know, in terms of, I think this is something that the administration does really well, thinks about it, which is how do you have sustained continuous efforts and, and not just one-offs, which, you know, last for a few days and then wear off, that, that have that continued engagement? And I'm interested to hear how that develops and how that, I, I mean, am I hearing you say that some of it, I, I, I hear what Catherine is saying that, you know, we can't, something preach here or too informational may not have the impact, but if there are ways, like you cited, where there's time, you know that there are times in the, the course of a high school student's life where they're more likely to, to face these kinds of challenges or decisions, that, you know, how can we help them make better choices and sustain where?
So there will be opportunities for you to voice your impassioned
Yeah.
concerns. And I certainly would encourage board and community member to voice their opinions on the subject. And you can trust that it's your superintendent and I am actively doing so. So another area of, of challenge for us has been in and around the funding of our athletic programs and fundraising associated with them. And we've had a conversation and referenced directly in this room, the desire to develop one uniform booster club for this school district. We have a number of smaller clubs, whether it's the Friends of Irvington Football, the Matt Club, the Lacrosse Group, that have a variety of different fundraising efforts or vehicles to support their respective programs. But there is a strong belief, I believe among the board as well as the administration, that we would benefit from the opportunity to create a booster club that would support all of our programs. And that, that would have the potential through its structure to grow beyond looking at just athletics and to be able to support our arts programs and other clubs that may exist within our schools. So there has been some effort that has been underway and run into some roadblocks and getting it off the ground. Some of the practical challenges surround the, the legal legalities of a school district getting directly involved with it, that it needs to be set up as its own not-for-profit outside of the school district. So Mr. McCormick has been working with a group of parents and admittedly have run into some challenges. So we're going to be dialing this back in over the next week or so and reassessing the approaches that have been taken and mapping out a new direction to get this done. I think it's becoming a lot harder than it should be. I know Deb has sat in on some of the committee meetings. So we're actually going to strategize, connect with Mr. McCormick and look at a, a different approach to actually bringing this home. And really with the objective of trying to have something in place for next school year.
Can you just summarize what those challenges?
Sure. I think, I think that the challenge, I've, I've sat in on at least four of the meetings this year, but I personally, before being on the board, had attempted to get this booster club off the ground, going back two years ago. It's, it's definitely, it, 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 there, there has been a, a different group of people that have met over the course of the last year. So originally, Artie McCormick had met with the head of Irvington Youth Lacrosse, as well as a couple of parents who were interested in forming a booster club. Then it shifted, I think it was last year, Dave Cohen was brought in because it was brought to, you know, everyone's attention, that you really can't get a booster club for high school sports off the ground if the principal's not involved. So then there was a series of meetings with Mr. Cohen, with Artie McCormick and another group of parents. And then in the last few meetings, yet again, other parents have been brought to the table. And I think there's been a lot of movement and bringing in different parents because there's been a lot of discussion about whether it should be a K through 12 program? Should every sport that is run in the district have a representative at the table? Should, should there be more representatives for the larger sports and less for the other sports? So in my opinion, it's been, there's been organizational challenges, that there hasn't been a clear direction from the beginning as to what we are setting out to achieve, what the mission was to get off the ground, what the booster club looks like. And so there's, there's, there's been outsiders who have been brought in, who have, who've from other districts who've gotten booster clubs off the ground. And they've given us some advice and, and indicated that the, it starts with your athletic director and the athletic director has to be behind it is definitely important to have your principal involved and you need a core group of dedicated parents. What the challenges have been recently is that the group of parents who are around the table with Mr. McCormick, no one has stepped up to say, "I want to be president." And I think personally, it's because that there's not a lot of clarity surrounding what that job entails and how long the job would last and, and in what form it would take. And then the person who's president has also been concerned that they would have to actually get the not-for-profit formed off the ground. And that's too big a challenge. So the last meeting, we discussed how we could really run some of these programs parallel. Let's have a group that gets the 501(c)(3) off the ground. Let's have another group that focuses on board leadership and maybe we can get a president that comes out of that group. And then the other challenge that's definitely been discussed at each meeting is how you incorporate and work with Friends of Irvington Football and Irvington Youth Lacrosse, which are two very strong programs that already exist in the district. And there may be some resistance from some of the programs or members of those programs and coming together with the booster club and how you organize funds that are raised and how you distribute funds that are generated. So there's a lot of questions. So I think to get this off the ground by the fall, it has been the suggestion of the parents in the room that we need a, a mission statement like you would for any 501(c)(3). You need a clear articulation of what it is we're hoping to achieve month by month, year by year. And I think then if that is, if that is given to the parents in the room, you may find that, that someone will step up to be president. But right now, there is not anybody who wants that job.
Can I ask you a question? This may be a little ignorant, so just shut me down.
Dave, just speak up.
I just want to ask a question. It might seem somewhat ignorant, but if, and if it is, just shut me down, it's okay. Boosters are financial supporters of sports organizations, correct?
It can be arts or sports.
Arts or sports organizations. So I love it, I expand it. I just remember when I, when I moved here, someone had said, you know, baseball's a dying, I went to my first Little League coaching thing and someone said baseball, you know, little, little ones, T-ball. And someone had said, "Baseball's a dying sport in Irvington." So the, the person who was running the thing actually said it from the rec, which is fine, was limited a number of kids and it was a dying sport in Irvington. And I just wonder if, obviously we're talking about money, so we're not talking about kids, but if more kids' parents were actually involved in sports, like, because within Irvington, it, it just seems to me, I, from the earlier child dates, a lot of kids go to play Little League in Elmsford, soccer at Greenberg United. So the, the youth sports where there's no sports in school are sort of, our kids are sort of leaving to go and maybe coming back when it's time to be grown up and then the parent may be attached. And I just wonder if there's a deeper connection somewhere that could be made with the rec department and sort of growing sports internally within Irvington?
I was going to say, what, what you see happening, what you're speaking to is happening across the nation.
Everywhere.
I think there's some phenomenon there. And there are certain sports that are struggling. I'm the father of an avid baseball player. And rec programs everywhere are dying. My son, when he started playing T-ball, there were like six teams, right, within our own town, within his grade level. And now they've merged with another town's program because of it. And my son plays in yet another town and on a travel team. And the, the culture of sports, particularly around soccer, you're seeing that there are just so many different travel programs out there that they've squashed a lot of the local recreational programs that have been developmental in nature and have served as feeder programs to the school-based programs. So I think there's a piece to it, that there is some phenomenon there. But I think the connection with a booster club and the, a well-run booster club has the opportunity to introduce and build connections there. Because you think about opportunities to bring awareness to programs, you think about the coordination and organization of sports camps, that we can start to engage our youngsters in programs locally, certainly presents opportunity.
And specifically in Irvington, I mean, the, the question you raise is one that came up at the booster club meetings, a good example is field hockey. We do not have a rec department field hockey program, whether it's, it's lessons, intramurals, introduction to field hockey. So when the girls come to field hockey the first year, they're not playing until they get to the high school. So if they, if they don't, if it doesn't catch on or there's not an active group of parents who are supportive of field hockey, the girls start to lose interest and slowly you see that they drop out of field hockey. So as a result, that sport is one that seems to always be on the, the chopping board as to whether we're going to be able to run it or not run it. We just don't have enough enthusiasm and we don't have a feeder program from the rec department that, that comes into the high school. So it was discussed at the booster club that that would be, that would be one of the missions would be to reach out to the rec department and say, "Could you offer clinics like we do for lacrosse? Or could you offer a weekend program as an introduction to field hockey to get these kids excited?"
Yeah, I mean, I, I, they're unbelievable, the rec department. So I imagine that there would be, no one works harder than Angela, right?
So in short, we need to kind of refocus and organize the group. And, and again, there's commitment to getting this done. And I think through some different approach and some real targeted efforts, we will be able to deliver.
I just wanted to throw in one sentence.
As you say, but one thing I will say, that, that, you know, there's, there's been many challenges and now we've come to the summer. So if we're really thinking that we're going to get this off the ground by the fall and we have a homecoming, there has to be a summer commitment. And right now, when I look at the group of parents in the room, we have one meeting scheduled that's left for the group that agreed to form, you know, over six months ago. And there's not a commitment over the summer. So I would say that if we're going to have the homecoming that we've all been talking about and really dreaming about and putting our, bringing our community back together around that event, there's going to have to be a lot of work over the summer and we're going to have to pull parents into that to make it happen.
Yeah, so from left field, if there's resistance potentially from, because there's some existing booster clubs, and from what I understand historically, there's been some loss of, of fundraising in, in the arts and music. Just putting it out there, maybe consider coming from the other direction, from the arts side, where there is a real need as well. And perhaps less infrastructure in place than what we see on the athletic side.
We need it, we need an arts and music booster club.
That's an interesting point, though, where there's less resistance, start at the point of less resistance. And then, and then as it grows larger and more organized, then start to...
But I don't think there's resistance in forming a sports booster club at all. I just think that when there's two sports already have strong booster clubs of their own, that it's just going to be when we first launch our booster club, is it, is it, is it for all sports or all sports but football and lacrosse? So a group of the sports, you're not going to have any problem whatsoever getting off the ground.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other point I would say, why I would be interested in, in this consideration is that, you know, we're going to go to some dinners in, in the next few weeks and that sports recognition dinner is going to be well-attended and the senior awards may not be as well-attended. And I just feel the more we can do to recognize the other aspects of what we're doing in this school district, I think that would be appropriate for, for us to consider doing.
Well, you say something that's very interesting that we, that never came up in one of our committee meetings, is that announcing that the district is committed to a booster club, it would be an ideal opportunity at the senior sports award dinner to actually take a moment, if you think it's appropriate, or at least discuss it at the meetings you have, and, and actually say, "This is something we're doing that we're committed to. Is there anybody in the room that wants to come forward?" And maybe likewise at the senior awards night, that, that's, I mean, I know these are senior parents.
Or another, another event, yeah.
A lot of senior parents have younger, have younger siblings and maybe you'll get those acting.
Yeah, and then at very least, it, it creates some additional buzz around it.
Yeah, and then at very least, it creates some additional buzz around it, and I, I think that's a worthy effort. But, again, I know Deb, that we committed that we're going to connect on this, and, and then meet with Artie to kind of motivate this, to, to get it to the finish line. So, you know, we look forward to making some progress, and of course, there will be updates. There were a few other items that circulated on lists. One was related to our curriculum work, UBD Rubicon Teaching Thinking. At the next Board of Education meeting on June 6th, the administrative team's going to give an update on our work this year, and I think there's going to be, a lot of the, a lot of your questions will be answered on that night. Dave Cohen, a couple of times this year, and Reina as well, have talked about the development of a new high school master schedule, and it's something really looking at our students' experiences holistically, and, and initiative that is really to drive home the opportunity to continue to promote academic excellence in, in our high school, and to do so, allowing the schedule to be a tool to help us achieving those objectives. There is a open meeting for all community members on June 1st, and Mr. Cohen has put out notices with respect to that, and I would encourage Board members and community members to attend to learn more about the, the process and the opportunities that are on the table that the high school team is exploring.
I just signed up, hope they'll let me in, because the deadline was yesterday to sign up to RSVP. You sent an email around, and?
And I'm signed up for it.
Okay.
He acknowledged that he saw that I was signed up.
We touched base on, I'm just going through my list, the website. Another item was discipline statistics. I think that once we get through the school year, that we'll be able to provide a, a report that the, the board can see. The one thing I have to tell you that is a pain in the neck, is dealing with student information systems, because we actually are now, since this topic first was introduced here, Jesse and I have been working with Patty Pankato, who unfortunately is retiring at year's end, but the folks at the RIC, to try to develop some kind of custom report, because the silly steps that we have to go through to be able to pull and organize data, to be able to collect the right fields, and it should be, like, click a button, and there's your report. And so, we're trying to develop a tool that'll allow us to do it and do so on a regular basis, to eliminate all, multiple reports having to be condensed, and, you know, creating custom spreadsheets to do it. The system should be able to do it. And what it produces now is like lists of kids' names, and what the, the conduct or fraction was, and it, it's not in a workable, data-friendly sense. So, we're working with the RIC to kind of develop a, a report, so we, we certainly will bring that back to the board. There were two other items that made the list, one being Naviance, and another being Code of Conduct. And there were areas that we didn't engage in dialogue there, so for, for me to be able to kind of understand the questions and to be able to satisfy board inquiry, I think that I just need a little bit more information in, in what you're, you know, what you're looking for, so we can determine how we can satisfy.
So, the Naviance was, I just wanted an update on.
What is that word?
Naviance is.
Naviance is. You're so green with your children.
Yes, it's, it's what high school students have to.
You'll learn by the time your kids are sophomores.
High school students have to put in where they've applied to colleges, and then it gets merged with their GPAs, and then there's a scattergram of where Irvington students have gone.
So, the idea is we can get that information.
I'm up there.
So, all I wanted was an update on what, what were the results of this year's class? Where are they all going, you know?
So, as Reina reminded me, just, I think it'd be worth, Reina, if you wanted a second, that Naviance is actually begin to introduce to our kids in middle school. In and around, there's like career planning-type activities that they're engaged with, but big picture, it becomes like a repository for all kinds of college-related data and submission of materials for college and the like. The challenge is that it's dependent on student reporting, where students have to self-report where they're being accepted and so on. So, Dave has been working to put some protocols into place that the kids have to go through and update things to get their caps and gowns, and, and that to be able to populate the data. So, it's helpful on a couple of different fronts. One, we can see the success our kids are having, you know, class by class, and, you know, which schools they're applying to, and you can look at that kid and think, hey, was this the right school for the child or not, or why didn't they get in here or there? But what it also does, it gives you a real historic picture of where Irvington kids are successful. So, there's trends in college acceptance all across the country, where certain schools target certain areas and certain types of school districts, and to see where those matches are, and for a, a parent, child, a guidance counselor, it gives you a different lens to look for opportunities for, for if our kids want to pursue a particular school, a particular program, where might we be more successful if we're going to apply to a certain school, or go visit certain schools to see if they're the right match?
I thought what Catherine was driving at, which was what was, I was interested in, is that does Naviance, is there an ability to generate reports for us? Is there, is there, is there some tool that Naviance can give a board of ed that kind of says, "This is where you are successful. These are the schools your students tend to go to. These are schools that your kids never get into," just so that we could take Naviance to another level and not just have it useful for students and parents?
And I know it's possible, because I know that you can look at, you can put in your GPA and your test scores, and then it gives you a scattergram of all the Irvington students that have been accepted at that school that you're targeting, or not accepted, and where they sort of fell in the GPA and the test scores, to compare it to what, to see if you have a shot.
That's really cool.
I can follow up on that.
And I think the Code of Conduct, at least for me, what I had wanted out of it, I don't know if you recall, but one of the discussions when Artie was doing the presentation on athletics back in January, was a commitment to revise the Code of Conduct, you know, in addition to other things, to really lay out expectations for how our students behave in athletics, or in just representing the school district, and, and to the point of the discussion on the, the drug use, what their, what repercussions might be in place if you stray from the Code of Conduct, meaning that, you know, participating in extracurricular activities such as athletics is a privilege, not a right, and, you know.
Do you see that as not being covered in the current Code of Conduct?
It's not clear. It's a little bit vague.
Do you mean the activity, the activity Code of Conduct, or the, the district Code?
Because there's, so there's.
I think it's the activity Code.
Because our Code of Conduct, I think, is pretty concise in defining that, you know, that certain types of things are privileges and can be revoked. There's consequences for certain types of actions, and we've had situations where our students have been spectators at another school for a basketball game, let's say, and their conduct was not becoming of an Irvington student, and we have disciplined those children for their conduct off-site.
Can I ask you to interrupt? Is that something that'll come up in that discipline report that we want to, to see? So, we know that, I mean, that, that's one of the reasons we would never know that, is because we don't get that type of information?
The, the report, as we're trying to have it assembled, would be student, obviously not providing names, but nature of infraction consequence, date, grade, and some demographic data, the actual details of the specific event. I think there has to be cautioning around that, because we don't want to, to go out and publicize something that could be very easily pointed at an individual student.
Yeah, but, I mean, if, if there, if there's been a disciplinary action taken against a student for an athletic-related event, is that going to be coded somehow, so we know that, in fact, we're, we are enforcing our activity Code of Conduct, or that our athletes are, in, in the instances that you, you know, that we hear that there's been some repercussions, that we can actually look at a report and say, "Oh, it did happen this year"?
I can tell you, I think there've been two instances in my five years where the Code, the Activities Code was utilized as opposed to the Code of Conduct.
I see.
So, my honest answer would be, I don't think so.
I think there's a, a second, very different piece to this, which is, I think, Deb, at our last meeting, you updated this, about, you'd gone to a.
Yes.
Discussion about some consideration of, of changing the way schools deal with, with discipline issues. In fact, I shared with the board today, there's a, a bill in front of the New York State.
The Assembly.
The Assembly. And I, I think that's an issue you've raised as well, Phil, in terms of looking at how we handle discipline, and, and, and whether it's.
What about restorative justice?
Yeah, so.
But, but the, the, the presentation I went to had emphasized, you really, as a board, you can't really look at that unless you know how you're disciplining, and how frequently you're disciplining, and which students are for what reasons, and that's why.
So, step one is.
I think we put step one on this agenda, was, are we going to receive some type of report?
So, and I, I think it is, so I, I think we need to kind of step back a little bit, and I think I would encourage, you know, trustees to go and look at the Code of Conduct.
Great. I just stepped back, we haven't even stepped forward, so, but, but, okay.
The point was on, on the conversation, I think we are, and I think Deb makes a point, is that I think we should take time to review the Code of Conduct, because I'm sure we all haven't read it. And I can tell you, you know, we read it, review it as an administrative team, as we go into June, look for opportunities for revision, we always have our attorneys put eyes on it to see if there's need for review or update based upon any changes in law, and then we bring it to the board during the summer for adoption in September, for implementation in September. So, I think it's important to have, if there's concerns, to have understanding where they're coming from and have some baseline information to help inform that. And, you know, there's, there's process that I think we have to go into, in that I think the board, very, from a policy standpoint, has the right to have concern and want to have things reviewed, but the Code of Conduct embodies lots of people, right? There's kids, there's teachers, there's administrators and parents. So, if we're going to step back and look at a, a broader view or review of our Code of Conduct, it should be done through multiple lenses, but we should be approaching it from an area, if we want to have, if there are concerns, how do we tackle those concerns? Michael, the bill that you're referencing, that's in the Assembly, there's opposition to it in the Senate, so I don't know if it's ever going to see the light of day. And I was surprised to see the success that it had in the, in the Assembly. There's a lot of concern in and around it being overreaching and causing lots of concerns for actual operations in schools, and there's a lot of philosophical concerns in and around the push for restorative practices, restorative justice. It's, there, there is lots of big money behind that right now, and we have some politicians that are campaigning for it, is some of the belief of how it made it into this bill. There is some history to restorative justice being, trying to be implemented in Irvington, and it never took off for reasons that I, I don't fully understand, it was well before my time. But there's, there's lots of debates in and around whether that's the right approach or not. So, so there's, that's one of the reasons there's some opposition to that. So, I don't know where that will go, but more importantly, to Irvington, I think we should be familiar with what our data is, to Deb's point, and then I think we should step back and see if there's areas that you're uncomfortable with, and then look to have dialogue around that area. And, and if there's areas that we're uncomfortable with, we have to ask, well, why are we uncomfortable with it? Is there reason to believe that it isn't working, that it's not, we're not serving our students well, that our kids are not being treated properly as a result of the Code of Conduct? So, there's, there's aspects of that I think we really need to consider, rather than saying, we're just going to jump in and try to revamp it, and, you know, the board administration will sit down and do it. I think we got to ask the questions, understand what the questions are, what we're trying to get out of it, and then think about what the responsible process would be for us.
Well, I think Deb's suggestion that is leading to this statistics is, is a great idea to, to drive this processless data. I don't think I, I know of anyone who's, headlong, I think some, some of us have held opinions for a few years without really pushing on this issue, so I think we're ready to do it in a deliberate way. I would point out, I guess, one specific area that makes me uncomfortable, and that I would be interested to see how it plays out, if, if it's, there's some way to represent that in statistics for future conversation, is that, is that when a student is suspended, and they spend a period of time at home, and that we're paying for a tutor, I would be very interested to have the conversation, can we do a better job with that student within our schools, in terms of how we deal with that issue?
So, we start with the, I think we start with the data and, and see where we go, so have an understanding of what that real impact looks.
Just to build on, just speaking of data, any progress on finding a data person?
I never heard from your, we had an email exchange, I invited him to call me, and he didn't call.
He will.
So, if you could give him a, a pro, that would be appreciated. You know, we're, you know, we're in the process of looking at a number of different clerical structures and replacing Patty Pankato and restructuring her role, not replacing Elaine, but hiring a new secretary for my office, and the responsibilities that can be taken on there. We're also looking at the replace, possibly replacing the security greeter in the district office entrance of Dow's Lane, and in doing so, utilizing some of the monies that we have available through that to be able to expand the roles and responsibilities, to have a true receptionist there that can do clerical work. So, we're kind of still evaluating the structure, but we're still open to trying to figure out what we can do on, on that front.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just related, I think, to some of the items that you were just reviewing, the Athletic Handbook that, that you and Artie are working on, is that, is that also on this list, or is that something?
It's not on, it didn't make the list, but I will certainly provide an update, because there is, I've seen some of the work product along the way, and I can say that unlike the booster club where we're, we have some disappointment, there is some good progress being made on this front.
Great.
But I'll.
And actually, thank you for saying that, because it was actually the Athletic Handbook that Artie committed to doing exactly.
Yeah, that is correct. And they, the other committee has met a half a dozen times, I believe, and they had, I think, one or two more components to wrap up.
Great.
And he promised me it was going to be done by the end of the year, so I'll follow up with them.
Super. And then, if, if that list is complete, the only thing that I, I was hoping that would be kind of added, no big surprise, is beautification efforts, because we've talked about it, we've, we've raised it in buildings and grounds, it's not really something that we've, I feel like it's, it's on a list, but I'm not sure where we're at and what we're committed to do, separate and apart from the money that we put aside, but literally, truly beautification efforts. There's some that's already been done, that's plantings, but we have talked about lots of other stuff. Can we add that to the list as well, just so that we know what our plans are?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be a Buildings and Grounds, the idea to come back with a.
No, well, I thought this list was really just one that we're going to keep track of, like the.
No, this is really, so, we have a strategic plan, we have then a long list of other things that some people like to deal with or have dealt with, and this is really things that came up in 2016, 17, that we're updating and what are next steps. So, I think.
And that's what I mean, I feel like 2016, I've raised me in G beautification.
Yeah.
On numerous times, and I'm just wondering, where, how, where does that fall? I mean, is that on?
It's B and G.
Yeah, so it sounds like B and G.
B and G, yeah. So, I just keep raising it at B and G.
And I, I think, Deb, to your point in the email that, and now you're saying it, I believe was errantly deleted from my inbox, that Carol and I have yet to speak of it. It was on Friday.
We had a chat about it.
You, but, about some next steps with B and G, and I think there's value in, in all of our committees being a little bit more strategic in our approach, and with that is the commitment to scheduled, regular meetings. And I think where we've always run into challenge in achieving that, it's not an excuse, but a bit of our reality is with having five, only five board members, it's generally speaking, only like three or four people, some years, two people that are involved, and we're working with work schedules and trying to align calendars was a challenge. Having seven members, we can spread out those responsibilities, schedule some regular meetings, and we can hit different times a day, different days a week, to try to have more folks engaged and have regular meetings. So, I think from a strategic approach in the scheduling and the formulation of the committees, we'll be able to have, be able to set some more regular objectives. The beautification piece is, is something that, that our resident partners have done, have been impactful with here on the board, but I, I think mapping out a plan for that is certainly should be discussed within Buildings and Grounds. And I made note of it as well.
Great, thank you.
Can I just also, I, I know I brought it up late in the year.
I'm sorry, I just want to follow up with, just to say, I think, on this topic, but that's, that's great, right? I mean, what I'm hearing and what you addressed is that it sounds like it's not quite getting off the ground in B and G. I mean, what I'm hearing and what you addressed is that it sounds like it's not quite getting off the ground in B and G. But ultimately, that seems like that's the place where it should happen.
Well, I think beautification in itself hasn't really been a focus of B and G because the budget has been sparse, to say the least. So it's really been maintenance projects. Right, you know, well, and it's been maintaining the buildings has been the focus. And that's, so I think rightly so, it should maybe find a new spot.
Very important.
Yeah.
But big picture, I think that's, you know, this meeting, the next meeting, the meeting after that then, you know, that we have are the chance to figure out where do these, where do these things, where should they exist and how will we make progress on them?
Yeah. And so if we think about like, you know, the idea, we've, you know, we've come up with district goals year over year, we've had building goals year over year. This area kind of becomes some good objective work for the board. And that opportunity to define how we can function with our committees more effectively. The level of commitment that I think will be defined through the governance document that Phil and Deb are pouring over lately. And, you know, and I think to look at some objectives here, whether it's, you know, a small district goal or a board goal, to outline some priorities here and to find ways to chip away at them, I think, it'd be really important. And I think what this year's Buildings and Grounds Committee has demonstrated that you can do some impactful work with only a few bucks. And it doesn't need to be reinventing the wheel and building hundred thousand dollar gardens. That a few hundred dollars here and there can really make a difference.
Good to go?
Yes.
So I just want, I know I brought it up late in the year, but I really wanted to just follow up and not necessarily until September, it's fine by me as well, but just a professional development plan for the district in terms of teachers, administrators, et cetera.
It's been noted.
And I guess for the things that didn't quite make it, there was a commitment in terms of developing a survey process in our district along the lines of what New York City schools do. I don't know if there's a-
Yeah, so we're polling surveys. And where my big disappointment was last week is that I knew, and it kind of comes back to our conversations earlier in the year about partnering with somebody to do it. Because every district that you see around us, they're all working with companies that they're paying anywhere ten to twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars a year. So that's Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, NIAC. I'm trying to think of the different superintendents I've spoken to recently. So I went into Survey Monkey because they promote and advertise that they have all these school satisfaction questions that were generated, developed by Harvard GSE, Graduate School of Education. And you go in and it's, and I have actually printed it on my desk and it doesn't quite hit the mark, I think, where we want to go. So I'm actually, everybody that I've reached out to that I'm seeing doing it through my own research or word of mouth, everybody has products that are being generated by outside groups. So New York City, you know, I don't know who does it, but that's a heavy-duty survey, the one that was-
Salary putting that together.
What's that?
There's a lot of money in salary putting that together.
Of course, of course, you know. And so I haven't given up. Like I said, you literally go and look at my desk right now. There's a stack of questions printed out from different sources. So I'm still working on it, but it's an uphill battle right now.
We do see the other districts using outside resources.
Like Dobbs, their survey is some new company that they struck a deal with that's trying to get into the area. So real expensive product, it sounds very familiar, right? Real expensive product that they got a cut-rate deal on, but that cut-rate deal is still a pretty penny. And Hastings is using K-12 Insight. So everybody's using different products like that.
And just one final one, at the end of the budget process, I'd raise the question about looking at sort of the gender equity in terms of science, computer programming and competitions. You know, particularly with those first two where we're spending quite a bit of money, taking a look at how we're doing on that front. So I just wanted to bring that back out on the surface.
So all good discussions to have as we're looking to prioritize our work moving forward.
Can I just quickly provide a summary for Deb and me about the handbook?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so just very quickly to remind people who may be watching, extraordinarily patient people. The board committed to creating a handbook for new board members primarily, but also for existing board members to align around. This commitment happened in one of our board retreats. And we, Deb and I, agreed to edit this document. We received sort of a raw document from our consultant friends Ken and Susan. And the first task was to format it and then basically organize it in a way that was a little tighter than what they had presented us. Deb has done an amazing job editing it and really sort of set the tone for the style and clarity in terms of the edits. I have been editing it more recently. The format that we've been using, by the way, in Google Docs is that one of us will edit and suggest the edits to the second person. The second person accepts the edits. So we have a pretty good document at this point. Chris has sort of chimed in at various points along the way, hopefully adding a few things here and there. We've asked him a few questions. We have a few outstanding questions with Gus, you know, just sort of legal matters. But we're really quite close. So I bring all of this up because, for two reasons. I'm actually timing myself, so it don't take too long. Number one is that I think you guys should do a first read of this on June 6th because our last board meeting of the year is June 25th. And, you know, we tried, we really want to commit to getting this done before new board members start. So I would suggest if you have the time on June 6th, try to do the read. And I think what we'll do then is share it with you ahead of time so you can look at it. But what you're going to have to do unfortunately is look at the documents to be grounded in what we talked about in our retreat. Look at what was given to us in hard copy. Because, you know, the Google Doc that we're using is now vastly different than that, not vastly, it's very different, vastly, very kind of similar. It's somewhat different than what we started with. You'll want to just look at the paper document and compare it to what we've done. And then obviously, what I would suggest doing, I think, is, and we just have to decide, this is whether we're going to add comments in that Google Doc or whether we're going to add comments here and somebody will capture those. That's a little more complicated, I think, doing it here. Maybe the thing to do is to capture it in the Google Doc and then just for the purpose of the public, you know, to be consistent with open meetings. Instead then, just-
That's what I say, that's the concern, to make sure we don't want, you know, just as the two of you and then I would be included, as you said. Us going back and forth is fine, but once we get beyond that, we could have concerns.
Yeah, so we just, we'll have to figure that out. But we're going to be done, you know, soon, a couple of days at most.
And then the only thing I would add is that, to give you the reassurance, that the document we received, we read it obviously and then went to the other materials we received as new board members of the Board Orientation Binder. And we also went to the handbook that we're given when we started and read those again to make sure that what we felt was important in those two documents was included in this little document that we're now creating. And so there's, I feel that what we've created is, has more information rather than less because we wanted to be comprehensive. Because we think that the instinct for a new board member will be to actually look at this handbook as opposed to going to those big fat binders when you need a quick answer.
Right. It's seventeen pages right now, which is manageable.
Great.
And it's really concise. They've done a great job last year.
Deb, full credit in terms of being concise. She's quite a wizard with the editing and sort of, it just reads very clearly.
It's great.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Sounds like a-
Okay, that was my four minutes.
I thought you were videotaping yourself.
Four minutes and twenty-three seconds. To be clear.
He's doing Facebook Live.
I thought he was streaming himself.
Should do a Facebook Live with the audience right now.
There you go, he's sleeping.
You've got some-
It's very cold in here.
But I'm not complaining.
You've got some live anymore.
Where are we now? Are we ready for-
Consent agenda.
Thank you, all right. Okay, so may I have a motion to, oh, does anyone want to pull anything out of consent agenda for discussion? I want to just note for the record that we have transportation policy for first reading and the series of the administration. Does the policy committee want to say anything about that?
I don't even remember those, but we did go through them at some point and there was a lot of editing that went on, again, led by our fearless legal editor.
The pen, the pen, Harvards. Now, I'm, yeah, I don't, there's nothing specific I would highlight. It's consistent with what was there before, but we improved it.
Okay, so anything else?
Maybe this name.
We have a James Mataloni Scholarship Fund, so we want to make sure we recognize that and thank the James Mataloni Scholarship to reflect two five hundred dollar awards when there are two worthy candidates. So that's out there.
Just the point that the-
Thank you.
The scholarship has a healthy reserve. So the motivation is to try to share it with more kids.
Great, excellent.
And do we want to congratulate that new teacher that we're appointing?
After the vote? Before the vote?
Oh, right, exactly, after the vote.
After the vote.
Okay, so may I have a-
Showing old schools.
A motion to, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Okay.
Dave's got it. No, you, it's all you, brother.
All right, me first, Dave second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so-
Now we can congratulate the teacher.
Now we can congratulate the teachers, Irvington graduate.
Yeah.
Irvington graduate.
Irvington graduate and current resident.
You got to really, that's like how it's supposed to be done. Bring it back to the community. You bring it home, right? I love that. Very cool.
She's very excited. Her returning to the district.
Is she going to be collaborating with teachers that she had? Very interesting. No?
I don't think there are any teachers that made sure to have been here that long.
I've been there long enough. That would be an interesting journey.
Yay. Are we gonna, we have to officially finish?
I know, I'm waiting for Catherine.
Do you want a motion to close things out?
No, I think I'm going to be here for another hour. You guys just sit down. Okay.
That's sarcasm.
Yeah, maybe, just to tell. Okay, the next meeting of the Irvington Board of Education will be June 6th, the 7:30 same place. May I have a motion to-
And the retirement party ahead of time?
And the retirement party ahead of time, let's not forget. At 6:45, the retirement party.
Is it the retirement retirement party?
And the guest.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, so moved, Harvards.
Second.
Second, Dave, all in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Good night.